测试一下，一二三
好
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin the council meeting in just a moment. If members of council could take their seats. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of the 23rd of October 2013. Bienvenue à la conseilie municipale de la ville d'Atoua pour le 23 octobre 2013. If members who are able to, please rise for prayer and remain standing for the singing of our national anthem. Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. It's my pleasure to ask Councilor Scott Moffett to introduce our special guest who will sing our national anthem. Councilor Moffett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce Devon Wassel-Taverish. She is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to spread the wealth here. Devon's parents live in Manetteck. She actually lives in Barhaven and she went to high school in Alta Vista, so I'm covering a bunch of bases. I got urban, suburban, and rural, so I really cannot be criticized for, uh...
What about Osgood?
Osgood is not taken into account in this, in this one. I'm sorry, Devon. Devon graduated from Canterbury High School and earned her a licenciement in vocal performance from McGill. She is both a professional soloist and an ensemble performer specializing in early music. She is a longstanding member of the Juneau Award-winning ensemble L'Aschapelle de Québec, Les Violons du Royaume, and also the elite Ottawa Bach Choir. She has sung several performances in both Carnegie Hall and the Walt Disney Concert Hall in Los Angeles, as well as in various venues in Europe. Although Devon's solo career has concentrated mostly on early music, she's also an accomplished artsong performer and conducts classes every year at Canterbury. Devon lives in Barhaven, as I mentioned, with her husband and daughter, and teaches both voice and piano in her home studio. Devon, take it away.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, in all thy sons come. Car ton bras supportent les pays et ils supportent la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brisés exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you very much for that wonderful rendition of "O Canada." Great way to start our meeting today. The Ottawa City Council. It's now the opportunity for me, on behalf of council colleagues, to present the Mayor's City Builder Award, and I'd ask Mr. Harley Bloom if he would come forward, along with his city councillor, Tim Tierney. Mr. Bloom, Councilor Tierney, welcome. Great to have members of your family or mother and... Among many other involvements, Mr. Bloom is the longstanding executive director of the Gloucester Agricultural Society.
Among many other involvements, Mr. Bloom is the longstanding director of the Gloucester Agricultural Society.
I know this group for the Gloucester Fair, which they put on each year. It's always an excellent and well-run event. And what really allows the Gloucester Fair to stand out is that wonderful day that is sponsored in part, I believe, by Ottawa Hydro. The day before the fair opens for public, you have children with disabilities that come, and the fairground is all theirs for that day, and it really is quite special. While the fair only lasts a few days each year, it takes hundreds of hours of work by a dedicated group of volunteers who work year-round to ensure the success of this important institution. And leading that group for over thirty years, the executive director of the Gloucester Agricultural Society, Harley Bloom, are honored each day.
And leading that group for over thirty years is executive director of the Gloucester Agricultural Society, Harley Bloom.
I'm not sure enough to commend Mr. Bloom's volunteer work, but he's involved with a impressive number of other organizations as well, not to mention owning and running his own business, Bloom Microtech, since 1990. He has helped organize and run the annual Canada Day celebration at Petrie Island. He's been a Kiwanian, as part of the Kiwanis Club of Orleans, for twenty-three years, and he has worked with the Children's Aid Society for many years as well. I'm not sure if this is a title or if that's a different type. I thought there was a subgroup, but I don't think so. Or a Kiwanian for the past, that's right, for the past twenty-three years. And he's worked with the Children's Aid Society for many years as well. To list all of the organizations for which Mr. Bloom has volunteered would be a mighty task, but it's a testament to his work and his generous spirit to those who have worked with such, uh, with, uh, offer such a huge praise in describing his efforts. Generous, essential, tireless are some of the words often heard in describing someone that truly embodies what this award is all about. Thank you very much, Mr. Bloom, for your continued involvement with all of these organizations in Ottawa and how much you do to the community, or how much you do for the community. And I wish you all the best as you continue to stay actively involved in your community. On behalf of my colleagues and your city councillor, Tim Tierney, who is very proud of your activities, we'd like to present you this award. I wish you very good luck. Thank you, councilman. Thank you, your worshiped members of council. And my family. We, uh... I don't do this for the overalls. So I do feel awkward, but I am appreciative. And I'll just be real quick and say thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bloom, and members of your family, and thank you for the work you do in our community. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
C.M. Minette.
Président.
Councilor Blowas.
Ici.
Councilor Harder.
Here.
Councilor Wilkinson. Councilor Alshantiari.
Present.
Councilor Cadri.
Present.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Shirelli.
Here.
Councilor Egley.
Here.
Councilor Deans.
Here.
Councilor Tierney.
Present.
Councilor Fleury.
Ici.
Councilor Clark.
Present.
Councilor Holmes.
Here.
Councilor Hobbs, Councilor McCray.
Here.
Councilor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Councilor Hume. Councilor Blay.
Here.
Councilor Thompson.
Present.
Councilor Moffett.
Here.
Councilor Duroche.
Here.
Councilor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Merci. Confirmation of minutes, adoption of process verbe for the meeting of September 25th and 9th of October 2013. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt. None. Communications, as noted. Regrets, Councilor Hobbs advised she will be absent for the meeting of 23rd of October 2013. Motion to introduce reports, motion pour ta présentation de rapport, conseil Blowas et Blay, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and table the report from the City Treasurer entitled "2014 Draft Operating in Capital Budgets Tax-Supportive Programs", the report from Committee of Adjustment entitled "2014 Draft Operating Estimates Committee of Adjustment", the report from Crime Prevention Ottawa entitled "2014 Draft Operating Budget Crime Prevention Ottawa", the report from the Ottawa Police Services Board entitled "Ottawa Police Services 2014 Draft Operating in Capital Budgets", the report from the Ottawa Public Library Board entitled "Ottawa Public Library 2014 Draft Budget Estimates", and the report from the Ottawa Board of Health entitled "Draft Board of Health 2014 Budget", as these reports relate to the 2014 draft operating and capital budgets being tabled at this meeting. And that the rules of procedure be waived to receive and reconsider the report from the Director of Human Resources entitled "FTE Analysis Report Information Supplemental to the Budget Estimates", as this report relates to the 2014 draft operating and capital budgets being tabled at this meeting. And that the report from the City Clerk and Solicitor entitled "Status Update Council Inquires in Motions for the Period Ending October 18th, 2013 Community Protective Services Committee Report 27", "Environment Committee Report 25", "Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 36A", and "Planning Committee Report 57A" be received and considered. And that the rules of procedure be suspended...
Item Number 11, Amendments to Water Bylaw 2003-500, modification au règlement de 2003 500 sur l'eau. Committee Recommendations as Presented. Carried. Carlington Heights Pump Station Site Upgrades Class Environmental Assessment, organisation de la station de pompage Carlington Heights. Councillor McCray, I believe, had a quick comment on this?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure if any member wanted to hold this item, and if they do, we can discuss it later, but I wanted to point out staff. Ms. Sheppers is here today, and I think I also saw Leanne Sneddon. Just to compliment our staff on the work done on this file, this particular upgrade to our water system will be a backup reservoir for more than a quarter of a million people. And when we look at the impact that the Woodruff Water Main Break had on the community, it's important that not only that we continue doing this work and investing, but we're also speaking of water rate budget at some point, and it's good to connect the dots. And I also want to thank staff for making sure that that reservoir, which in 1954 was the site of former Charlotte Whitten consecrating an area, dedicating it to veterans, is actually still available for the public use during this time. So, there's a lot of dog walking, a lot of reflecting and things going on in the area. And, Mr. Mayor, staff have been simply outstanding on getting the job done, so I did not want the moment to pass where I could not give personal thanks on behalf of the community, but also on behalf of the committee.
Thank you for that input, councillor McCray. Anyone like to hold this item on the report? Carried. Thank you. Item Number 13 is Quarterly Performance Report to Council, Q2, April 1st to June 30th, Rapport trimestre sur le rendement présent au Conseil pour le deuxième trimestre, première avril au 30 juin 2013. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 57A, Comité de l'urbanisme, Community Design Plan, Environmental Management Plan, Infrastructure Servicing Study Update, and Official Plan Amendment for Phase II Area of the East Urban Community Plan de conception communautaire pour la communauté urbaine de l'est, phase deux. Carried. Item Number 15, Urban Natural Feature Strategy Update, les points au sujet de la stratégie sur les caractéristiques naturelles urbaines. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 58, Application to Demolish 23 1/2 St. Andrews Street, a property designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Lower Town West Heritage Conservation District, demande de démolition de 23 1/2 St. Edward, St. Andrews, excuse? Carried. Bulk Consent Agenda, I believe councillor Hubley would like to, and councillor Moffett, dissent on item number F, la nouvelle scène. Does anyone else wish to take anything off of the consent agenda? On the consent agenda as presented with those dissents? Carried. Disposition of Items Approved by Committee Under Delegated Authority, suite à donner les articles ratifiés par les comités en vertu de pouvoir délégués. Received. Carried. And the item with respect to the auditor general will come back after the budget presentation. So, we're now back on the agenda to page three, the budget for 2013. Today, I have the pleasure of tabling the 2014 draft budget for the city of Ottawa. As in preceding years, I want to thank each and every one of my colleagues around this council table. Thank you for your input into this document, which you all provide year-round.
Je vous remercie également de votre... Thank you also for your commitment to make this city a better place where to live, work, and have a family. I also want to thank our city manager, the assistant city managers, and the treasurer, who every day work relentlessly to provide the services that are so important to our residents, our businesses, and areas.
Came to visit me and other members of council when we did our mall tour of pre-budget consultations in September. It's always good to hear directly from citizens who do not always have the time or inclination to attend a formal city council committee meeting or a public forum. There was a gentleman who suggested we cut our workforce and have greater investment in industry to create jobs, and this budget does that. There was a new student at Carleton University who wants us to spend more money to clean up the Ottawa River. Our money is ready to roll, we're just waiting for our federal and provincial partners. Grandparents told me that they were happy about the frees on parks and recreation fees because it allowed their grandchildren to enroll in sport and dance classes. Others said to keep bus fares down, while some wanted to see salaries frozen. At one of the rural fairs I attended, one gentleman from West Carleton, who was involved with the 4-H Club, asked why we could not make their annual $5,000 grant permanent rather than having to fill out an application each and every year for the same amount for the same work. Good idea, and we'll make it happen, and I thank councillor El Schantieri as well for that. As always, lots of ideas and opinions. All of the input is appreciated, and most people also understand that we cannot do everything all at once. But they appreciated our desire to listen, and in general told me that the direction this council has laid out is good. Earlier this year, we asked staff to raise the bar another notch in our effort to control tax pressures on our residents. We set a maximum limit of 2.0% for any rate increase in 2014. I'm happy to be able to tell you that Budget 2014 will see us hold the line to an increase of 1.9%. This figure will be the lowest rate increase in seven years at the city of Ottawa. I can also report that our partners, Ottawa Police Services, Transit Services, the Ottawa Public Library, and Ottawa Public Health have once again constrained themselves within council's maximum increase cap. The same will apply to transit fare increases, and I'm pleased to report that pending the approval of the Transit Commission, average fare increases will be kept to 1.9%, a far cry from the 7.5% of four years ago.
So, I'd like to congratulate the Transit Commission Chair, Diane Deans, the Chair of the Executive Community of the Library, the Health Commission of Ottawa, Diane Holmes, and the Chair of the Police Services of Ottawa, Eli Schantieri, for their good work and their efforts to ensure the financial stability and consistency of all operations of these municipal partnerships. Furthermore, thank you to John Manconi, to the Transit Director, Charles Bordelot, and the Director of the Public Library, Danielle McDonald, and to the Medical Officer, Dr. Israel Levy, for their excellent work.
2014 will also freeze the waste collection charge at $82 per household, and I want to thank the Chair, councillor Maria McCray, and all of the Environment Committee for their efforts guiding the environmental work of this council. This budget will see a continuation of the frees on mayor's office and councillor office administrative budgets, as well as on my own salary. And for the fourth consecutive year, we will maintain a freeze on parks and recreation fees, making life a little more affordable for parents and families with children in league sports or fitness programs, and for all who take part in any of the hundreds of city classes offered. Budget 2014 also proposes, for the third year in a row, a reduction of 55 FTEs, full-time equivalents, at the city of Ottawa. This continued focus on reining in staff growth comes in spite of the fact that we are also adding new facilities to provide more services to our residents. The Barhaven Minto Recreation Complex will require 63 new FTEs as we begin operations in this magnificent new facility later next year. And I should also note that we are looking forward to the official opening of the Richcraft Recreation Complex in Kanada later this year. This great new facility represents a $40 million investment on behalf of and to support Kanada and West Carleton residents. We're able to provide added personnel for these new facilities without a boost to overall staffing as a direct result of our Service Ottawa initiative. In 2014, Service Ottawa will return more than $4.7 million in net savings to our bottom line.
And this while offering residents and businesses friendlier access to services. Furthermore, the budget proposes to continue to increase our contribution to capital assets as determined in our long-term financial plan.
Will be more than $15 million, with 10.4 million coming from the citywide portion of the budget. Now, as a council, we have been prudent. We have invested wisely in Ottawa on the Move, for instance. We have restrained tax increases while continuing to provide good, basic services the people really need, and our measured approach will pay dividends to the city in the future. The budget maintains the city of Ottawa's strong fiscal position. Our credit ratings remain high and unchanged. Moody's has provided its highest rating at AAA, and Standard &amp; Poor's is AA+. The treasurer has reported that Ottawa's net total debt per capita is second lowest amongst major cities, including Toronto, Vancouver, Edmonton, Calgary, and Montreal, based on the most recent data available. In September, the treasurer reported that in Q2 of 2013, capital budget adjustments resulted in a reduction of $19.1 million in debt financing requirements. Our firm hand on the tiller means that we will not be adding any new debt in the 2014 capital budget. But we can't stand still, and our infrastructure needs and the infrastructure needs of a burgeoning city require us to continue to invest in renewal as well as growth. In Ontario, municipal debt may only be used for capital expenditures. As we all know, unlike the other two levels of government, we're not allowed to run a deficit. And borrowing is limited to 25% of all revenues raised by taxation and other fees, and we remain far below that level.
Furthermore, city council has set the maximum limit of the debt repayment to 7.5% of all revenues of the city. In 2013, this level will be of 4.5%, which is way below the limit.
No new debt added to the 2014 capital budget. The city is in good financial shape. Budget 2014 will see us stay the course as it delivers solid progress for our residents. Many projects are underway. Lansdowne is coming to life. We see this now with the work on all aspects of the project. In fact, when many of us toured the facility, there were over 700 construction workers working diligently to meet the deadline of having the facility ready for the return of football, soccer, the park area, retail, and housing later next year. The stadium where the magnificent new wooden veil is taking shape later this week will be really quite a sight. The move and reinvigoration of the Horticulture Building, the start of the new grate lawn and urban park, and all the new features it will contain. Budget 2014 includes $2 million in operating and one-time capital fit-up costs to program and maintain the public space elements of Lansdowne Park. And while we are excited to see this revival taking place, I do want to take a moment to thank the people of the surrounding neighborhoods. They are living through a great deal of disruption to their everyday lives. Our project managers have done their very best to reduce the intrusion as much as possible. The innovative use, for example, of an onsite concrete production facility has meant thousands fewer, thousands of fewer trucks on the street in the area, for instance. But no matter what is done, there will still be disruption. On behalf of all of us, I thank the residents for their patience and understanding, and I want to thank councillor David Chernuchenko for his constant efforts and engagement on this project on behalf of his residents. The same thanks is also due to our neighbors in the eastern reaches of our city. The transportation network is going through every bit as much renewal as Lansdowne.
The residents of Orleans, Navin, Blankford Hamlet, Cumberland, and all the other areas in the east end had to readjust their daily lives. While in cooperation with our provincial partners, we are redoing the junction as both highways and are widening the 417.
Special thank you to the resourcefulness and ingenuity that the people are showing as they adopt to the work and rerouting that are inevitable parts of improving existing roadways. Councillors Blowis, Manette, Blay, and Tierney have been steadfast in seeing that the interests of their residents are first and foremost every step of the way, and their insight has also been important to the planning and execution of all the work. Mobility and transportation are important to any community and the local economy, and our investments in these changes today will make for a better future. Again, on behalf of all of council, I say thank you for your understanding and patience wherever you live in the city. Now, Ottawa on the Move, I believe, has been a remarkable program for our city, and there is one more year to go as we complete the most ambitious homemade infrastructure improvement program in Ottawa's history. Under this program, we've seen projects completed on time and on budget in every ward in the city, many in fact moved up years ahead of schedule. And this is happening as we begin the real work on the biggest infrastructure project in Ottawa's history. Phase one of our LRT is finally under construction. It's the project that will remake our city for the future and for the next several generations. The first phase of light rail transit will move people about our growing community more efficiently, more comfortably, and in a manner environmentally much more sustainable.
This project is the first chapter of the Transit Expansion Project that will take place over the next few years in all the various areas of the city.
Everyone in this council should be proud that the shovels are in the ground and work is underway. Now, as we watch the investment of dollars across the city, we also need to keep our eyes firmly on the future. Just as in our first three budgets, Budget 2014 proposes a number of strategic investments that will benefit our residents as we continue to grow and mature as a major Canadian urban center. That means recreation and mobility needs must be met in addition to all of the other demands that citizens may have. This council has invested in our neighborhoods with park projects right across the city, and this, I'm pleased to report, will continue again in 2014. Ward 1 residents and councillor Manette will be pleased to see a proposed commitment to Cardinal Creek 18A and Petrie Landing Park 2. Councillor Blowis and Ennis Ward will see investment in Trails Edge Park 1. Councillor Harder will see funding allocated for Forest Park and Havencrest and Fraserfield's Linear Park. Councillor Blay and residents of Cumberland Ward will see design funding on the Francois Dupuy Community Center, right next to the beautiful new community center that was opened this year, and investment in Millennium Park. The Greeley Village Park Center and councillor Thompson's Osgood Ward is also in Budget 2014, as is the Forest Park in Chapman Hills for councillor Darasch and residents in Riverside South. Councillor Hubley will see investment in the Monahan Landing Park and expansion of Meadow Breeze Park. And councillor Cadri's Ward will see funds invested for the design and first phase of construction of a 3.24 hectare community park in the Blackstone community. Councillor McCray's Ward will receive funding for the rejuvenation of the Carleton Heights Park to benefit the many senior citizens and young families that live in River Ward. Par ailleurs, il faut mentionner que les Bibli- eyes firmly on the future. Just as in our first three budgets, Budget 2014 proposes a number of strategic investments that will benefit our residents as we continue to grow and mature as a major Canadian urban centre. That means recreation and mobility needs must be met in addition to all of the other demands that citizens may have. This council has invested in our neighborhoods with park projects right across the city, and this, I'm pleased to report, will continue again in 2014. Ward One residents and Councillor Manette will be pleased to see a proposed commitment to Cardinal Creek 18A and Petrie Landing Park Two. Councillor Blowas and Ennis Ward will see investment in Trails Edge Park One. Councillor Harder will see funding allocated for Forest Park in Havencrest and Fraser Fields Linear Park. Councillor Blay and residents of Cumberland Ward will see design funding on the Francois Dupuy Community Centre, right next to the beautiful new community centre that was opened this year, and investment in Millennium Park. The Greeley Village Park Centre in Councillor Thompson's Osgood Ward is also in Budget 2014, as is the Forest Park in Chapman Hills for Councillor De Rush and residents in Riverside South. Councillor Hubley will see investment in the Monahan Landing Park and expansion of Meadow Breeze Park. And Councillor's Quadries Ward will see funds invested for the design and first phase of construction of a three-point-two-four hectare community park in the Blackstone community. Councillor McCray's Ward will receive funding for the rejuvenation of the Carlton Heights Park to benefit the many senior citizens and young families that live in River Ward.
In addition, we have to mention that the libraries in the city are very appreciated and very much used, and we have seen three-point-six million users.
...to the library budget that will support these initiatives. Like the expansion of the Constance Day branch in Councillor El Shantiri's Ward in partnership with the Local Community Association and Parks, Recreation, and Culture. The implementation of new technologies at five additional branches, Carlingwood, Cumberland, Greeley, Greenborough, and the Main Library. And planning for renewal and modernization at yet two more branches, Rosemount and the Main Library. And in keeping with the times, a permanent fifty-thousand-dollar increase to the materials budget for the purchase of eBooks. I'm also looking forward to the opening of the ten-million-dollar expansion of the Beaverbrook Branch in Kanata in the summer of 2014 in Councillor Wilkinson's Ward. And our colleagues, Councillor Clarke and Flurry, will be particularly pleased to note that the eight-point-two-million-dollar commitment to the Donald Somerset Pedestrian Bridge and all that will add to both communities on either side of the river. These are just some of the investments we are making in the quality of life of our residents for the future. At the same time, we continue to put much-needed resources into the upkeep of our current infrastructure. Community and Protective Services, under the chairmanship of Councillor Taylor, will see, among other elements, an investment of approximately two-point-two million dollars for defibrillator replacement. These units are lifesavers, as we have seen in several instances, and even more important to the fabric of community life as the population ages. Fire Services will invest two-point-five million dollars in self-contained breathing equipment that is so integral to today's modern firefighting techniques. Forestry Service will see investments of one-point-two million dollars of new operating funds for forest cover initiatives, which involve management of the Emerald Ash Borer Challenge, increasing overall forest cover, and improved maintenance standards, including tree planting programs. Forestry will also see one-point-one-seven million in capital investments for lifecycle tree renewal and replacement of trees at the end of their life, storm damaged, or subject to Emerald Ash Borer.
This is a support for our future trees because we want Ottawa to be green. Together, these investments confirm our solid commitment to forestry services.
Environment-based effort, the Public Works Smart Energy Program will continue to roll out with a three-point-nine-million-dollar further investment in funding for 2014. When complete, this program will see implementation of more than a hundred energy-saving capital measures within existing city facilities. This program, you'll be interested to know, is on track to yielding one-point-two million dollars in annual savings by the end of this year, and is also on track to exceed the anticipated payback of five years. Infrastructure investments will continue in 2014. There's investment of eleven-point-six million dollars for the detailed design work on the Western Transitway from Bayshore Station to Moody Drive in Councillor Taylor's Ward. Councillor Wilkinson's residents will see a thirty-one-million-dollar investment for the construction of a new four-lane roadway to extend Compo Drive from Didsbury to Huntmar. As part of this year's forty-five-million-dollar investment in road resurfacing, Councillor Shirelli's College Ward will see work on, to name a few, Baseline Road, and I can tell you personally, every time I canvass Baseline Road, they say, "When is it going to get repaved?" "It will be done in 2014." Iris Street, Meadowlands Drive, and West Cliff Road. In the same way, Alda Vista residents in Councillor Hume's Ward will see work on Baycrest Drive, Dauphin Road, and Kilborn Avenue, while residents of Diane Holmes' Ward will see work on Booth and Slater. Lifecycle renewal of the Prince of Wales Drive and Nippon Creek Bridge culvert in Councillor Egley's Ward will be completed with an investment of one-point-two million, and water and sewer work on Sherry Lane and Brent Avenue will require three-point-nine million. Funding will be available to carry out lifecycle renewal and seismic upgrades for the Fitzroy Station Bridge over the Carp River in Councillor El Shantiri's Ward of West Carlton March.
An investment of two-point-six million in Rito-Golburn Ward will be used to replace storm sewers, as well as Rito Valley Drive between Roger Stevens and the bridge. In Councillor Tierney's Ward, renovations will be made for Enove Pas on Old Montreal Road and Cardinal Creek.
New Ascens Plex opens in the East End in Councillor Tierney's Ward. Councillor Chernachenko and Capital Ward will see integrated road and sewer work on First Avenue between Bronson Avenue and O'Connor, including sewer, water mains, and sidewalk, and full rehabilitation for large parts of this seven-million-dollar project. Councillor Deans and residents in the Greenborough area near Tapiola Crescent will see a one-point-five million dollar investment to correct settling roadbeds caused by poor soil base. In Kitchi Sippi Ward, Councillor Hobbs and residents will see combined sewers are being replaced with separate storm and sanitary sewers in the Rex and Kerr area, and this work requires an investment of three-point-nine million dollars. Ottawa on the Move was created and funded by this council two years ago. We've invested three-hundred-and-forty million dollars and leveraged that into more than five-hundred million dollars in total project work from 2012 to 2014. In those three years, we created employment here in the city, in addition to investing wisely in our future. And by the time we are done, we will have seen more than four-hundred projects across the city. City staff have worked hard to deliver these projects on time and on budget. Ottawa on the Move has seen a number of major projects, including the two-year, thirty-million-dollar Bronson Avenue Reconstruction Project, the Churchill Avenue Complete Streets Remake for twenty-one million dollars, and the Woodruff Avenue Reconstruction with an investment of eight million.
At the same time, Ottawa on the Move includes investments totaling a hundred million dollars for the changes in the 174 Highway, Carling Avenue, Eagleson Road, the Blackburnhamlet Side Road, Galette, and Albion Road, to name just a few.
Asset management is just one part of our job here at City Council. We've also been implementing Service Ottawa, as I mentioned earlier. In 2014, there will be even more coming from this initiative. My Service Ottawa for residents and businesses will launch. This will allow residences and businesses to create their own electronic account to securely access multiple city services and information in one place. It will include the ability to do many things, like apply and pay for a number of licenses and permits, including pet registration, business licenses, open-air fire permits, and numerous other permits. View and pay billing information for your tax and water bills. Search and view the status of service requests, opened or closed. View and manage garbage and recycling collection calendar.
You can subscribe to various programs and post things such as on Twitter.
One thing in mind: to improve service delivery to residences and businesses across the city. I want to thank Councillor Tierney and the members of the IT Subcommittee for their work on this important effort to bring about technological advances that will help us to better serve the public. And at the same time, under the direction of Chair of our Planning Committee, Councillor Hume, our Planning Department has been stepping up to the plate in improving service delivery. We have cut processing times for various applications, as the most recent performance report indicated, and we will be continuing to work to making, to make dealing with the City of Ottawa a pleasure, not a chore. We promised a Guaranteed Application Times Initiative, GATTI, covering five different development application types at the Planning Summit last year. As of August, there'd been eighty-nine applications under this program, and ninety-six percent were handled within the council-established timelines, and each of the three that missed the timelines had extenuating circumstances, but will still receive credits for their next similar application, as promised at the summit. Economic activity, of course, is the lifeblood of our community, and here, we as a council have also signaled and delivered on a new direction.
The economic development department has known a very good year, punctuated by various events that have helped us.
Innovation Department has had a year of achievement, punctuated by internal departmental successes and those externally by Invest Ottawa, to name just a few. A fifteen-million-dollar innovation agreement with the province of Ontario. The Capital Investment Track, CIT, program guides key investments through the city's requirements in a timely fashion. Between June, January and June, Invest Ottawa facilitated six-hundred-and-fifty-four new jobs, attracted twenty-five million in foreign investment, and twenty-six million in investment for portfolio companies. The new Major Events Office was able to attract an additional nine major events in 2013, as well as successfully winning bids for four future events. In fact, our Major Events Office has been a great success story. We have seen the fruits of their efforts with the Women's World Hockey Championships, the Ontario Women's Hockey Championships, the Duathlon World Championships, the Canadian Comedy Awards, the Canadian Gymnastics Championships, the CIS Final Eight Men's Basketball Championships, to name just a few. The combinations of bids won and events hosted in 2013 resulted in an estimated forty-five million dollars of economic benefit to our local economy, and that does not include upcoming events, including the Canadian Figure Skating Championships, which will be celebrating its hundredth anniversary at the Canadian Tire Centre in January 2014. Our Name is Spreading is a great place to bring an event, but when opportunity knocks, as we all know, we have to get up and answer the door. To that end, Budget 2014 seeks your approval to increase the budget for the Major Events Office by three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This will allow us to capitalize on the opportunities at hand and to be better prepared to celebrate our country's hundred-and-fiftyth birthday in 2017. And on that note, I wish to again thank the co-chairs of the 2017 Task Force, Councillors Blowas and Hobbs. It will take us to the next level of our strategic objective: to bid more, win more, and host more.
Ladies and gentlemen, this supports the fact that we have succeeded, and this is a benefit for our residents. The next year of our mandate will be accomplished, knowing that we have met those commitments.
Delivering progress and getting the job done for our residents. It's about moving into the next year of our term of council, knowing that we have met many of the commitments that we have made together. Knowing that we provide needed services: police, fire, paramedic, transit, waste collection and recycling, snow removal, road maintenance, libraries, public health, drinking waters, parks, culture and recreation, six-thousand kilometers of roads and two-thousand kilometers of sidewalks, wastewater handling, and much, much more, every day for families across this great city. What we have before us is a balanced package to move our city forward. What we're doing is what we said we would do while investing in our infrastructure so that our residents can count on those services they need in the future. I believe that this proposed Budget 2014 continues the solid work that we have done in the last three years together. I hope that you will be able to share in that assessment as you review the details in the coming weeks at committee deliberations, in public consultations across the city, and here at council itself. This budget, when all is said and done, is about progress. Progress in keeping taxes low, progress in building and maintaining infrastructure and city assets, progress in making our city an even better place to live, work, and visit, and progress that allows our residents to say that they live in one of the cleanest, greenest, safest cities in the country, if not the world. Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup.
Merci, Conseil McCray, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor El Shantiri. Be it resolved that the Mayor's remarks given at the City Council meeting of the twenty-third of October 2013 be printed in the minutes of today's council meeting. Congratulations, Felicitations, Mr. Mayor.
Merci. On the motion carried, thank you. And now I hand the floor to our City Treasurer, who will give us a presentation, and I believe we have a slide deck. Thank you for your work, Ms. Similak. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll just get started here today. Just for those of you who don't know him, I have Mr. Budget with me, Tom Fettick, so he'll be assisting me today. I am going to be presenting a summary of all the budgets that are in front of you today, and I apologize in advance if I'm stealing the thunder from any of the fine folks who will follow me today. So we're going to walk through quickly how you set the budget guidelines, what's in all of the operating budgets, what's in the capital budget, and what's, what the budget timetable looks like. I just want to point out that in the documents that you're going to receive, which I understand are all going to be online, if they aren't now, the transmittal report has summary documents in the back. If you have residents who want to know what the total picture looks like, direct them to that document. Last year, we had people trying to add up each of the books, and normally they didn't add it correctly. So the transmittal document, number one, has summaries of all of the budgets put together. So with respect to the budget guidelines, in May of this year, the Mayor put forward a motion that the budgets be developed to result in a recommended tax increase of less than two percent. We came forward with the Budget Process and Timetable Report in June of 2013, which you adopted, which required boards and commissions to develop their budgets with the same objective. It identified that any strategic initiatives would again be funded from provincial upload, and it required that boards and commissions work with the envelopes that they were being provided with, and that any changes in the budget, any additions, would require equal offsets.
And net needs in supplementary taxes are twenty-nine-point-six million dollars. This will have an impact of two-point-ninety-one percent on the tax bill. For a taxpayer in an urban center, according to the average assessment, is three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, and the increase will correspond to seventy-eight dollars per year for city services, which includes a garbage collection.
In the draft budgets is twenty-nine-point-six million dollars, which is a one-point-nine-one percent increase on the tax bill. For an urban residential taxpayer, that represents a sixty-two-dollar-per-year increase. We've also identified on this chart, the rural taxpayer is, it amounts to a fifty-five dollar, and for your average commercial assessment of two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, it's ninety-six dollars. Just a caution in looking at this chart, though, this does not reflect any impact from tax policy or reassessment. If you remember, this is the second year of the phase-in of the reassessment we received in 2012, so individual properties are affected by not only what you set as a budget, but what the value of their home is in relation to other homes as a result of reassessment. The property tax change, as you can see, is one-point-nine-one percent, is the lowest in this term, and as the Mayor has said, it's the lowest in the last seven years of this council, or of the council. The Mayor also indicated that we were reducing fifty-five FTEs across the corporation. In fact, it's fifty-four-point-six-six, but I won't quibble the point-three-three. And it's made up from increases and decreases across the corporation. The decreases are almost everywhere, the increases are in very select areas. This chart shows you that in total, in 2013, we had a FTE complement, fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight. We have 2014 requests built into the budget for increases of ninety-two-point-seven-three and offsets reductions of one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-three-nine. That nets you your fifty-five FTE reduction. The increases that are being requested, you'll see Transit is requesting six, that is to accommodate the increase in O-Train service that happens in 2014. Committee of Adjustment is requesting two to deal with workload. The eighty-four-point-seven-five in city departments is primarily from the items that the Mayor identified. The Minto Recreation Centre in Barhaven takes up the largest share of those. Lansdowne, because that's opening, there is a requirement for FTEs for that, and there's an increase in the Economic Development Office. The reductions of one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-three-nine The reductions of 147.39 come primarily from Service Ottawa efficiencies and other internal reviews that have taken place this year and in previous years that are being reflected in the 2014 budget. I should also note that in those reductions, there is 7.22 FTEs that will be proposed to be removed from the water and sewer budgets, which are not in front of you today, but will be coming forward in the next few weeks. The water and sewer budget, if you remember, we now set that on a multi-year basis. So when you approve the 2013 budget, you also approve the 2014 water and sewer budget. Under that new process, we will be coming forward with a report at Environment Committee on November 19th, which will identify any changes to the 2014 water and sewer budget for consideration, and then you will deal with all of the budgets, not only all these tax budgets, but the 2014 water and sewer, any changes to that, on November 27th. So the operating budget, just, I want to remind you that the numbers that are being presented here are a combination of all the budgets that will be approved on November 27th, with the exception of water and sewer. So for the budget highlights, so the cost to maintain the existing operations across the city is worth $40.3 million as a net number. Those are made up of a variety of cost increases and savings. Labour costs, we continue, for the services in the tax side, it's primarily people delivering services to residents, so labour is our biggest cost. The increases in 2014 are $31.3 million across the board. Inflation is 13.3, the biggest part of that is fuel and hydro, which is approximately $5 million. We have an inflationary increase to the reserves of $7 million. This is a larger number than in past years, primarily because Transit is making an increased contribution to the reserve to make up for prior years when they did not make an appropriate level of contribution. But there are savings to offset some of that. This is, 2013 saw your last double-deckers arrive, and there are savings of $1.5 million as a result of that decision in fuel, parts, and operations. Service Ottawa is providing approximately $4.9 million gross savings. Police have identified another $2.4 million in savings. And then there are a number of reductions in discretionary expenses and staff rationalisation that result in $12.6 million in savings in 2014. As every year, we look at what was the experience in the current year to determine what needs to be adjusted on a go-forward basis. There are adjustments as a result of the 2013 budget requiring an additional $2 million. This is primarily a result of the decrease in the supplementary budget account reflecting the lower level of growth that we have in 2013. With respect to growth, there is $13.1 million set aside for these initiatives. Most of these you're familiar with, the Minto Recreation Centre the mayor referred to. Roads and sidewalks, every year you assume dozens of kilometres of new roads and sidewalks, which Mr O'Keefe has to maintain, that's $1.3 million. The contribution to the capital reserves, this is for growth-related projects, and we are doing this in advance of the Development Charge bylaw review in 2014. This was identified as part of the Transportation Master Plan that was tabled a few weeks ago. New households that we will be collecting garbage from, their garbage fee generates a half a million dollars, or, sorry, their cost of collecting their garbage generates a cost of half a million dollars. There are some new policing initiatives of $2.2 million, which I'm certain the police chief will be happy to talk about. Public health has identified 400,000 of growth initiatives. 200 of that, though, is dependent upon receiving funding from the province, and the other 200,000, I'm certain the chair will speak about. Economic development, there's an increase of 600,000 for that office for both officers and for Tourism Ottawa. And then the old train expansion, that is costing an addition million dollars in 2014. We do have impacts on our budget as a result of changes that the province introduces. These are mostly offset, though, by revenues that we receive from the province. In April of 2013, there was a rate increase to Ontario Works of 1%, and we also have forecasted 2.5% increase in caseload. That has a gross cost of 5.2, and the province picks up the majority of that, though, of 4.4. In long-term care, there's a new requirement for physiotherapy, and, again, this is 600,000, but the province is picking that up entirely.
Le budget comprend les financements... The budget also includes additional funds for strategic initiatives. The total is $11 million. This amount should be added to funds that were already in the basic budget in prior years. Lanzon Park, $2 million. Forestry initiatives, because of the opening in June 2014, as well as one-time costs for minor works. And the increase of operational expenses, $2 million. And capital expenditures of $1.2 million in order to redevelop Arts Court, as well as ensuring that the facility is operational. A cultural plan, half a million dollars, cycling safety evaluation, $20,000, community design plans in priority areas for Transit, $295,000 increase to capital reserves for LRFP, $5.4 million, according to our long-term financial plan.
Cost increases, those net cost increases are revenues of $70.1 million. User fees and charges of an inflationary rate across most of the corporation, except for Recreation and Culture, where there is, again, no increase. Transit fares, as the mayor mentioned, and 1.9% increase. You have continuation of provincial upload from the province in two areas, the Ontario Works and security for the court that the police are benefiting from. The province pays for their share of social services, long-term care and ambulance. Plus, there are other revenues that we are recognising in the 2014 budget, such as the garbage fees that we will collect from the new homes that are coming on stream in 2014, and the last little bit of money from the Riddle Carlton Raceway, the annualisation of that. We are forecasting assessment growth to be 1.7% for 2014. That generates taxation from new homes and businesses of $22.8 million, and the net change on the tax bill of 1.91% generates $26 million. So in total, you have a balanced budget for 2014. Just to highlight to you, so the budget in front of you today is totals, almost $2.6 billion. When you add on what you've got for water and sewer, which is a little over $300 million, you in total have budgets worth $3 billion. This is where it's spent on the tax side, and the only thing I would point out is that your three biggest services, Transit, Community and Social Services, and Ottawa Police, in total make up 44% of the spending on the tax side. Where do we fund that from? It's primarily from property taxes and user fees. If you look at this chart, you'll see that property taxes and payment and lieu taxes combined are 61%. You add user fees on top of that, of 17%, you're almost at 80% at that point. There's little left, which is the federal and provincial, and it's primarily provincial revenue, for the programmes that we deliver on their behalf. The capital budget, we are presenting a 2014 capital budget, and we are a forecast for 2015 to 2017. The 2014 budget incorporates the term of council priorities. It also includes what was identified in the Transportation Master Plan that was just tabled a few weeks ago. So the projects that were identified in there are reflected in the current, in the 2014 budget and in the forecast. As usual, we're using debt very judiciously in this budget. We are respecting the limits that council has established, and those are that the debt servicing is constrained to 7.5% of your own source revenues. And if you think of the chart that we, the pie chart we just showed, your own source revenues are your user fees and your taxes. And also that any tax impact would only require a maximum yearly impact on the tax bill of one quarter of 1%. This budget results in debt servicing in 2014, that is 5.4% of our own source revenue, so we are well within the judicious limits that council has set. The 2014 capital budget is $359 million in total. When you add in, though, what will be in the rate budget, you come to a total authority request for 2014 of $666 million. Seems small in comparison to previous years, but that's only because we had light rail in previous years. As the mayor had indicated, again, you are focusing on maintaining the assets that you own. 60% of what you're spending is being spent to renew and maintain existing assets. This is the third and final year of the Ottawa on the Move initiative, and included in the renewal is $52 million of projects for Ottawa on the Move. And as the mayor mentioned, this brings your total investment for this initiative to over $500 million and over 400 projects. The renewal budget also includes $45.5 million for road resurfacing, so residents can look forward to another summer of asphalt overlay. The strategic initiatives included, sorry, Tom, I went too fast. The strategic initiatives included in this include the continuation of what you started in this term: accessibility, pedestrians, cycling, smart energy investment, Service Ottawa investment, affordable housing investment. So how do we fund the capital programme of $359 million? As you'll see from this chart, we have cash coming on, approximately 66% of the budget is being funded from cash. The remaining part is being funded from debt, but as the mayor had indicated, there's no new debt. The tax-supported debt that you see here of $76.3 million that is being added on is almost equivalent to the amount of debt that is retiring in 2014. There's $71 million or $72 million that's retiring. The little bit of difference that's in there, $4 million, is debt that will be refinanced in 2014, that actually won't be initiative. So there is no new debt being added, it's just replacing existing debt in 2014. So just to quickly go through the budget timetable, for those who may be watching at home and want to participate in this, we have our public consultation meetings will be starting next Monday. We have one in the east, the day after that, we're in the west, in Canada. Then the south, the day after that, in Napan. And then, unfortunately, because of Halloween and all other things, the one for the central area will be held on November 7th, right here at City Council. Your budget meetings start on the 5th of November, with Fedco will be kicking it off. And we've put the schedule of dates up there, so any resident who looks at this can hopefully find the date for the committee that they're interested in. But the key information is on this slide, which is if you want to participate in the Budget 2014, there's a number of ways you can do it. We have an email address, budget24@ottawa.ca. There's a Twitter account, you can use the hashtag #OttBudget. You can call 311, leave a comment there, or a question with a fax number. You can register as a public delegation at the Committee of Council, starting on November 5th. You can also attend the multi-ward public consultation meetings. All of this information is online at ottawa.ca. The budget books are available online, and they are available in accessible format. And there's a hard copy will be sent to libraries and client service centres for those residents who may not have access to a computer. That concludes my presentation, Mr Mayor, and I just want to end by saying that, while Tom is Mr Budget, there's four Mrs Budgets at the city of Ottawa, and those are Anna, Tanya, Noonie, and Robyn, and they're back at the office, hopefully listening to this. And I want to thank them for all the hard work that they have done this year, and without their effort, this wouldn't be in front of you today. So thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Great. Well, I want to thank you, Madam Treasurer, for a very precise presentation and a lot of hard work that's been put into this document. So we're going to hold high-level questions of the treasurer until we go through all of our other guests who have to present. We don't have presentations for the Committee of Adjustment, so on the 2014 Committee of Adjustment received. Crime Prevention Ottawa, 2014 Draft Operating Budget, Présentation du crime d'au Ottawa, Director Human Resources Report, FTE Analysis, received. Ottawa Police Budget, we'll ask councillor El Shantiri and the chief and the director general to come to the table, and they have a presentation, followed by the library board, and then the health board, and then we'll go back to Miss Similak for questions. So after each of these delegations, if you have questions for our chief and chair of the police board, just to let you know, the police services board did receive this document and had a presentation this morning prior to council. So, Ms Fraser, Chief Bordelot, Chair El Shantiri, bienvenue. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Again, Mr Mayor, we present our budget early this morning at the police service board, and we tabled the draft operation and capital budget at the special meeting. As a member of council, we'll read the budget following the direction of the board regarding a tax increase of less than 2%. Ottawa is a safe city, and this budget will ensure the Ottawa Police can continue to provide the quality police and service residents expect. I want to thank Chief Bordelot and the budget team under the director general, Deborah Fraser, and Cathy Murray. So I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor, Mr Chair. Good morning, mayors, mayors, councillors.
Very pleased to be here with you this morning.
Challenging budget process, as we sought to balance the requirement for a restrained increase with the safety and security needs of our community. This budget will also ensure we can continue to focus on community priorities. This includes guns and gangs, violence against women, and traffic safety. To meet the board's tax increase direction, we identified 3.7 million inefficiencies and new revenues. Another $2.8 million in pressures had to be offset. With our service initiative, we have a plan to meet future financial challenges through innovation, efficiency, and improved customer service. Technology is a key factor in this strategy that will enable us to create collision reporting centres, online background clearance checks, and online reporting for some crimes. Increased partnerships, including increased cooperation with the city, will be vital to the cost reductions we are seeking. This budget includes the final phase of the compliance with the Capital Accounting, TCAR. Finally, this budget includes important investments in business continuity programmes related to our computer-rated dispatch and records management systems in our facilities strategic plan. These are vital to guaranteeing that we can continue to deliver excellent service to our residents in the future. I'll ask now for Deborah Fraser, our director general, to take over the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, chief. We'll present these couple of slides just to give the snapshot of the budget changes for 2014, and it's very simple from the police budget. In a snapshot, the police operating budget will be increasing by $7.6 million overall. In a snapshot, the police operating budget will be increasing by $7.6 million overall. The, we'll go through and have a quick look at where the $7.6 million is coming from in terms of pressures and some of the solutions that were applied to get us down to $7.6 million. The growth in the assessment base offsets $3.1 million of that impact, leaving $4.5 million as the net budget increase to be funded by the tax rate. The tax rate then, when you spread it over the assessment base, creates a 1.99% tax rate increase, and that's $11 for the average taxpayer in the city of Ottawa. At the end of the day, when you look at our budget documents, you'll see that the net operating budget for Ottawa Police is $263.9 million. There's, in round numbers, about $25 million worth of related revenue, so our gross operating budget is in the range of $288 million. Here's where the $7.6 million worth of funding is distributed when you look inside the operating budget. It's not a surprise to see that $7.1 million lands in the compensation area, where our service business and 83.3% of our compensation is found on the salary lines. The, we've made some estimates about what salary increases will be. The 2013 and 2014 salary matters are under discussion, and in fact, one is in front of an arbitrator right now, so we're in an estimates business. The, we're, we track our salaries against the Big 12 in Ontario, and the provision we've made here is in keeping with the market at this point. $1.4 million of the pressure in this year's budget is coming in the non-compensation area that relates to contracts that were for other non-compensation items that were settled last year and brought forward into the budget. Some of our items also attract inflation, and we launched some new services last year. So $1.4 million is the total, bringing the comp and non-comp to 8.5 million. You'll see that there is no pressure coming from provincially legislated items and no pressure from growth. There are no growth initiatives in this budget. There are some new services and new needs. Those are primarily two funds that we have launched. One is the, we've added funds to a project fund for our service initiative. That's the critical project that we launched last year, and we will continue to expand, and out of it will come the different kinds of projects and initiatives that we're launching to change the way that Ottawa Police operates and does business. So we'll, through there and the collision reporting center project, the online background reporting project, and the online reporting initiative that we have running, they will be concrete ways that will demonstrate our ability to increase tremendously, increase service to the public, to reduce costs, to redeploy sworn officer and civilian resources, and to generate revenue. So we've added funds to create our investment fund. We've also created a half a million dollar fund to deal with business continuity and to participate in the city's emergency management plan. The fund that we created to generate efficiencies has paid dividends in the 2014 budget, $2.1 million of dividends, actually. That's what's helping to reduce pressure on the police budget. We always adjust our user fee and charges to match the budget increase rate. That's going to generate $100,000. So at the end of the day, those, the pressure, the solutions, create a bottom line of $7.6 million for the operating side of the budget. As per the direction of the auditor general, when the board's budget practices were reviewed several years ago, we table a three-year forecast, so this is what the police services budget looks like for 2015 to 2017. It's based on a series of assumptions. On the salary side, we once again have used the best direction we can get, looking at the Big 12 in Ontario. We've continued to assume that the service initiative projects will generate a minimum of $1 million worth of efficiencies each year. Assessment-based growth is in around the range of 2%. You'll see, though, that growth returns to the police service in 2015, 2016, and 2017, and that is at a level of 23 employees per year. All of that then results in a 2.5% tax increase for each of those years going forward. The capital budget is a very small budget, especially compared to the city's own capital budget. It got even smaller this year upon completion of the TCAR exercise. Only hard assets are now in the capital budget. It's $7.6 million for 2014. It's primarily providing for the replacement of the fleet, for the replacement of our IT infrastructure. And you'll see that we're starting to plan for the IT infrastructure that will support the new south facility, a very opportune time to be looking at how we will create a duplicate site to support CAD and RMS, the mission-critical systems within OPS. Virtualization, cloud technology, and new opportunities to partner in this area will be ways that we ensure that we provide service to service and service in the instance of a business continuity event to the south and to other areas of OPS. Two steps within the facility plan that was approved by the board in June will be realigning Elgin as records moves out and CID moves in, and we'll be taking some steps to realign Swansea so that all material management functions are in one place. The previous slide showed that we don't use debt to finance those activities, they're all pay-as-you-go funded or revenue funded. When we look at the 10-year forecast, that picture changes a bit because our forecast changes and focuses more on the facility strategic plan. The funding plan changes to be about half and half debt and pay-as-you-go sources. The renewal of assets is about one-third of our future forecast. Growth and strategic initiatives account for the remainder, and that is to put in place the facilities that are forecast to meet growth and other strategic objectives of the police service over the next 17 years. The total capital budget is estimated to be $185 million over those scenarios. Mr. Mayor, we're happy to take any questions that you have for us at this point in time, and we want to thank you and your staff for their cooperation over the preparation of the budget. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Shantiri, did you have final comments?
I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of my colleagues, the board member, I want to say thank you to councillor Jan Harder and Yassine and the rest of the board for their support and cooperation with the chief and his staff on the budget direction, and I want to say thank you to the staff for preparing the budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. This time, are there any high-level general questions to the police on their presentation? As you know, we'll have opportunities to go in-depth on specifics, but any high-level questions? No, okay, thank you very much. So, received. Ottawa Public Library Board, we'll ask councillor Harder and Danielle McDonald, the CEO of the Ottawa Public Library, to come forward, and they have a presentation at this time.
So it's now time for the Public Library of Ottawa, the Chair of the Board, councillor Harder, and the CEO, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and fellow colleagues. Today, I'm making a presentation, as you said, with our CEO Danielle McDonald, and we have good news, as did the police. Our operating budget overview shows that we're increasing our budget by just under $1 million, giving you a 2014 net operating request of $43.5 million. That's 1.93% increase over last year. As far as our operating budget pressures go, besides the money to cover compensations, the balance of the funding is going to be invested in e-services, which is about $55,000 for more eBooks, and $77,000 for mobile devices for employees who do roving reference and extending customers' devices such as Chromebooks and iPads to additional locations. The library will also be using previous approved capital accounts to pay for one-time funding for furniture and equipment, for general repairs and maintenance, and for library equipment lifecycle. The library's capital budget represents almost $4 million, 3.96 million. Funds are going to be used to replace the aging fleet, which include our ever-popular bookmobile, deal with facility lifecycle issues, further the board's RFID, radio frequency identification in six locations, provide for the expansion of Constance and Buckham Bay branch, and further the necessary planning required to modernize and retrofit the Rosemount and Main libraries. We will self-fund capital projects associated with risk issues at Main, and these were identified earlier this year. In order to complete the work, we need an additional $195,000, and to do that, we're going to request council allows us to withdraw that from the library reserve fund. So we have lots to celebrate at the Ottawa Public Library in 2014. We're tripling the size of the Beaverbrook branch in Canada, our west district branch. We're expanding Constance Bay. We're implementing RFID in six branches, Carlingwood, Cumberland, Greeley, Greenborough, Main, and West District. We're increasing in eBooks and mobile devices for customers and employees, and we are replacing a bookmobile and homebound services van. I want to say thanks to Danielle and to her team, and to the Ottawa Public Library Board, and to you, city council, for all the Ottawa Public Library offers to our residents and businesses. Clearly, we are a success story when it comes to customer appreciation, and we truly value your support as we move forward in 2014. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions to the library of a general nature? Okay, thank you councillor Harder and Ms. McDonald. Merci beaucoup. On the library draft 2014 budget, received. The next is the Ottawa Board of Health. Les bourses de budget 2014 du Conseil de Santé.
The budget estimate.
Councillor Holmes is Chair of the Board, and Dr. Levy is our Chief Medical Officer of Health, who I know got his flu shot the other day. Congratulations. And councillor Holmes, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I was Chair of the Board of Ottawa Health. I will be representing and presenting the board's 2014 draft operating budget. The Board of Health is presenting a balanced budget of $55 million, and upon approval, the budget will represent a funding provision of $12.4 million from the city and $42.6 million from the province and from other funders. This draft budget also proposes an increase below the council-directed target of less than 2% increase for municipal taxes. Although Ottawa Public Health is increasingly stretched, given the growth in population and service demands, the proposed budget maintains services while addressing emergency community needs. Similar to all public health units in Ontario, Ottawa Public Health is working hard to meet community needs. Ottawa Public Health will maintain services and aims to address emerging community need predominantly through operating efficiencies. In 2014, OPH will continue to participate in the city's Service Ottawa Mobility project by deploying additional mobile employees, creating efficiencies and program reinvestment opportunities. As a result of the Service Ottawa project and associated efficiencies, three full-time equivalent positions are being removed, and OPH will invest $391,000 into food safety and our healthy eating, active living strategy. Reinvestments will allow Ottawa Public Health to increase inspections of high-risk restaurants, outdoor food vendors, and special events to reduce foodborne illnesses resulting from improper food handling techniques. Increased physical activity levels in the community, starting with school-aged children, and increased opportunities for active transportation to and from schools. As noted earlier, the Board of Health receives the majority of its funding from provincial sources. In addition to internal efficiencies, OPH will also aim to maximize provincial funding opportunities by applying for one-time cost-share provincial grants. Each spring, the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care opens up funding opportunities for one-time projects. The draft budget proposes that up to $200,000 be identified as the city's share of potential one-time Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care projects to fund additional community public health services in areas such as immunization, active transportation, mental health, health services for Aboriginal populations, and healthy food environments. Transfer of funds would only occur if provincial approval of the 75% share is received. The budget also proposed $200,000 in one-time investment from the city to address infection prevention and control in high-risk personal service settings such as body modification and tattoo parlors. Extreme body modification procedures such as branding and tongue splitting are becoming more common, and with these procedures comes an increased risk of hepatitis B, hepatitis C, and HIV. Public health inspectors have noted an increase in variety and complexity of procedures performed in these establishments. This investment would kick-start OPH's infection and control personal service setting planning, focusing especially on training on infection prevention and control practices to operators of tattoo parlors and other personal services setting establishments. Thanks very much for your time, and thanks to the staff of OPH who have worked so hard on this budget.
Great, thank you councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Holmes. Merci le conseil Holmes. Is there any?
Any questions?
To councillor Holmes or Dr. Levy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So on the draft Board of Health budget, received. Okay, so we'll now ask Ms. Similak to come back to the table, and those of you who have questions, again, I ask, as we've done in the past, these are of a general nature, and we'll have lots of opportunity for specific questions over the course of the consultation process. So councillor El Shantiri, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the staff again. Ms. Semlak, I know we haven't got a chance to go through the book yet, but the investment we have with Hydro Ottawa, can you tell me where was the revenue from it for this year?
For 2013, we budget for $16 million, and we actually had revenue of 17.6. So we had a $1.6 million surplus as a result of their business.
And there will be in the revenue, once we receive the budget book, basically, it will be shown in revenue?
They are included in non-departmental, they're just general city revenues. We have kept the budget the same, though, because their business plan doesn't actually show that they are going to be increasing their revenues dramatically in the long term.
And one more question, if I may. In the past, we talk about unfunded liability with our staff, and so can you just, you know, with a quick few seconds, tell me where we are today on that level? Are we budgeting enough for that envelope?
That's a very good question, councillor. We have, the unfunded liabilities show up when we present the financial statements, and there is a significant difference between the liabilities for future payments to employees post-retirement and post-employment. They are not all funded, but you have adopted a plan that sees some of those remain unfunded, not in the current budget. The current budget provides funds for all of those. It's just that you're not building up a reserve to pay for those into the future. They will be paid out and included in the budget in the year that they are actually paid to the retiree or the employee. You have a strategy, though, with respect to two of them, vacation pay and with sick leave, and those we are fully funding. So the rest of them, we are looking at those, and we will be coming forward in the new term of council to determine if there's any additional steps you need to take with respect to making certain that unfunded liabilities are addressed, and a strategy put in place to fund them if it is appropriate.
My follow-up question on this, do you forecast any year is going to be higher than other, like we see it in some different departmental perhaps? Like with the police, we know which year we're going to be higher than the other. Do you have that forecasted?
Yes, we do have that forecast, because we actually have to do that work as part of putting together the financial statements. Our actuaries look at the forecast of when employees will be retired. Our actuaries look at the forecast of when employees will be retiring and what are the city's obligations at that point in time. When would we know when we have to make these payments? And we include that in the number. So as part of what we do is we look at that over the long term, and we say, do we have sufficient resources within the budget? Do we need to increase the budget? Do we need to set aside money? What is the strategy that council should adopt with respect to those liabilities? There are certain liabilities, councillor, that you will not want to set aside money for. You will want to deal with those on an annual basis within the budget. And the one I can think of off the top of my head is WSIB. You will not want to be setting aside money to pay those. That's a cost of doing business in the day. So you will pay for it in the day, and you won't set aside a reserve to make certain that it's paid for in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Treasurer, and thank you to you and to all your staff on the budget.
Thanks, councillor. Are there any other questions to the Treasurer? So on the budget 2014, received and tabled, received, tabled, thank you. Next item is the Chair Auditor General Hiring Panel. On October 7th, the Auditor General Hiring Panel, selected by council, selected a list of candidates that would be interviewed for the position of the city auditor general. On October 10th, our colleagues Deputy Mayor Steve DeRush and Eliel Shantiri, and the Chair and Vice Chair of the Audit Subcommittee, Rick Shirelli and Alan Hubley, interviewed five candidates. The interview process was thorough and rigorous, and I'd like to thank Eric Lathrup of Audgers-Burnston for his assistance in our search, and I'm pleased to announce to council that your hiring panel is bringing you a recommended candidate who was our unanimous choice. As members know, I do not like council moving in-camera unless we really need to. Therefore, I'm asking the Clerk's Office to distribute two things to members of council. One, the first is the in-camera report on pink paper that was prepared discussing some specific details about the candidate and process. And two, the second, on the white paper is a motion that will be presented by the deputy mayors in open session that recommends city council appoint the hiring panel's recommended candidate. I therefore ask that we recess for five to 10 minutes, so that we all may stay at our desks to read the in-camera report. If you are already comfortable with the specifics surrounding the role of the auditor general and the process that you thought brought us to this point, you may skip to page six of the report. When we have all read the report, I'd ask if members have any questions. If members have questions, we have a motion to move in closed session. If they do not, I will ask the deputy mayor, Eliel Shantiri, move the panel's recommendation at that point. So we will recess for five to 10 minutes. If I'd ask if you could stay at your desks to read the material, and then we will come back to either go in-camera if you have in-camera questions, or to, thank you, to move the motion in public. So meeting is recessed for the next five to 10 minutes. If members of council are finished, it appears they are going through the two reports, does anyone have any questions that we would require us going in-camera? No? Okay, so our meeting will resume, and we have a motion by Deputy Mayor El Shantiri, seconded by Deputy Mayor Steve DeRush. So Deputy Mayor El Shantiri was on the panel. The floor is yours to read the motion. If I could ask members of council to take their seats, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor DeRush. With the term of the current auditor general expires on December 31st, 2013, and on May 8th, 2013, the city council directed that a search undertaken for the next auditor general. And whereas the city council established an auditor general hiring panel, the hiring panel consists of Mayor Jim Watson, Chair, Deputy Mayor, Councillor Steve DeRush, and Councillor Eliel Shantiri, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Audit Subcommittee, Councillor Rick Shirelli, and Councillor Alan Hubley, to engage a search firm to assist with the executive search, conducted interviews, and make recommendations to council relating to the selection of the new auditor general. And whereas on July 19th, 2013, the hiring panel engaged Augur Bernstein to be the search firm that will assist the hiring panel, and whereas the hiring panel met on October 7th, 2013, to select a candidate to the interview on October 10th, 2013, and whereas at the conclusion of the interviews, the hiring panel deliberated and unanimously selected a candidate to recommend it to city council for appointment. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council approve the following recommendation to the auditor general hiring panel. One, that Ken Hughes be appointed at the City of Ottawa's Auditor General effective December 15th, 2013. Second, and the city clerk and solicitor be authorized to finalize an employment agreement in accordance with the term and condition in the confidential report, and this may and authorize the mayor and the deputy city clerk to execute the agreement.
So we have a motion carried. Carried, and congratulations to Mr. Hughes. Et aussi merci beaucoup à Monsieur Lalonde.
Congratulations to Mr. Lalonde also.
The councillors El Shantiri, DeRush, Shirelli, and Hubley, I know a lot of time was committed to the process, and very appreciative of their efforts, and I look forward to working with Mr. Hughes, as I'm sure you do as well. Motion to adopt reports, Councillor Blowus and Blay, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the Director of Human Resources entitled FT Analysis Report and Information Supplemental Budget Estimates, and the report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending October 18th, 2013, Community Protective Services Committee Report 27, Environment Committee Report 25, Finance Economic Development Committee Report 36A, Planning Committee Reports 57A and 58, and the report from the Chair of the Auditor General Hiring Panel entitled Results of the Recruiting Process for the New Auditor General in Camera Reporting Out Date Not Be Reported Out, be received and adopted as amended.
Carried. A motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Councillor Chernachenko and Councillor Blay have two motions. They're really technical in nature because of a deadline with respect to the FIT programme and local companies that are going to want to bid on FIT contracts. So on suspension of the rules, carried. Councillor Chernachenko, if you'd like to move the motions, and if they could be put up on the screen, I believe the first one is before us.
Yes, okay, thank you. I'll skip a few of the technical wherest, if you're okay. Whereas one or more projects may be constructed and operated in the city of Ottawa, and whereas pursuant to the FIT rules, version three, applicants whose projects receive the formal support of local municipalities will be awarded priority points, which may result in these applicants being offered a FIT contract prior to other persons applying for FIT contracts. Now therefore be it resolved that council of the city of Ottawa supports the construction and operation of the projects anywhere in the city of Ottawa. The resolution's sole purpose is to enable the participants in the FIT programme to receive priority points under the FIT programme, and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of municipal approval in relation to the application or projects or any other purpose. This resolution shall expire 12 months after its adoption by council. And that 12 months is a mandatory rule for the province.
Councillor Harder, please.
It's not clear, are we speaking any project, or is this specific to projects that, at this point, only Councillor Chernachenko knows about?
No, that's a good question.
It is a good question.
It is a good question. Yes, glad to clarify, this is a blanket resolution that municipalities have been asked to provide, essentially saying, in the case of solar rooftop projects, we're okay with these going on. We give municipal approval rather than each one of them coming to us every time someone wants to put one on a barn or on a warehouse.
Or a school or whatever.
It avoids our having to see each one of them one at a time. And we've done it twice before, this is simply a renewal.
We did this, and it was for one year, and the one year is coming up, so. Councillor El Shantiri, a question to the mover?
I'm fine, I was going to ask the same thing, but I'm great, we have moved this, so we don't have to rush for individual application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. On the motion, adoptee, Councillor Chernachenko has a second on suspension of the rules, same issue?
The second one is very related.
Just on the suspension of the rules, carried. Councillor Chernachenko.
Related, there are two projects which we previously gave this resolution to, but they are not constructed yet, so therefore we need to, we're seeking delegated or giving delegated authority to staff to be able to effectively approve those two projects. So.
On the motion, carried. Thank you. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Councillor McCrae?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking that the rules be suspended to adopt a motion of congratulations for the christening of Prince George.
Mention, carried.
Carried, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor McCrae, if you'd like to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Watson. Whereas the christening of the future King of Canada, His Royal Highness Prince George of Cambridge, by the Archbishop of Canterbury, the Most Reverend Justin Welby, took place on Wednesday, the 23rd of October, at the chapel Royal St. James Palace. Be it resolved that the city of Ottawa send formal congratulations to His Royal Highness's, His Royal Highness Prince George's parents, their Royal Highnesses, the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge, and be it further resolved that all members of city council be invited to sign the letter.
Thank you, councillor. On the motion, carried. Adoptee, merci.
Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules?
Subsequent meetings, Councillor Holmes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a notice of motion regarding the sidewalk at 160 Elgin Street. Whereas the 160 Elgin Street complex, Plasbell Canada, situated on the block bordered by Elgin, Gloucester, Metcalf, and Napean, is comprised of a 28-story office building with 933,000 square feet of office space, a 10-floor above-grade parking garage with approximately 1,000 public parking spaces, a full block of ground-level retail space, and precast concrete paver sidewalks extending to the curb around the entire block. Whereas in November 2011, the city received a letter from the property manager of Plasbell which identified a safety concern regarding sidewalk settlement of more than an inch along the north side of Napean Street in the western portion of the block between Metcalf and Elgin, and cracks in the concrete on city property near the Plasbell loading dock. Whereas in February 2012, the city received a letter from Nelligan O'Brien-Payne, acting on behalf of Plasbell, reiterating the comments made in November 2011. Whereas settlement has continued along Napean Street and has subsequently been observed along the sidewalks surrounding 160 Elgin, along Metcalf, Gloucester, and Elgin Streets, whereas this settlement has caused a substantial difference in grade along the perimeter of 160 Elgin, whose property extends on a two-story concrete structure under the precast concrete paver sidewalk. Whereas this difference in grade poses a safety risk to pedestrians walking along the sidewalk and obstructs the ability to clear snow. Whereas in the winter of 2011-2012, 160 Elgin has installed at their own initiative and cost temporary safety barriers on their property to advise pedestrians of the safety risk and to discourage traversal of the changing grade. And whereas the resulting challenges has caused disruption to the businesses which operate in the Plasbell Mall, whereas the owner of Max Convenience Store, whose storefront abuts the portion of Napean Street, has received complaints from its customers and delivery drivers regarding the uneven sidewalk and the barriers thereon, whereas these temporary barriers remain the only action which has been taken to address the damage to the sidewalks, whereas in April 2012, the city clerk and solicitor responded to the February 2012 letter indicating that the city will continue to monitor the paver distortion on the south side of 160 Elgin Street, whereas the portion of the sidewalk that is settled is on city-owned right-of-way outside the 160 Elgin property line, whereas the city is responsible for maintaining its sidewalks in a condition where they are safe for public use. Therefore be it resolved that the sidewalks on the blocks surrounded by Metcalf, Napean, Elgin, and Gloucester Streets be repaired to a safe and accessible condition as soon as possible.
Okay, so that's the notice of motion to be dealt with at the next council meeting. Merci. Are there other notices of motion that would come forward at this point to be dealt with at the next meeting? There are none. A notice of intent from the Integrity Commissioners to submit the 2013 annual report for consideration at the 13th of November 2013 council meeting. Avise d'intention de commissaire à l'intégrité.
There is a notice of intent to present a report, an annual report, to be submitted at the next meeting.
Pour présentation de règlements, Conseil Blay. Blowus, excusez, et Blay.
Monsieur le maire, quelles règlements nîmes raye à l'ordre?
That the bylaws listed on the agenda, under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. Confirmation bylaw, règlement de ratification.
Confirming bylaw?
To confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of 23rd of October 2013.
Carried. Any written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk? Adjournment, Councillor Blowus and Blay?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 23rd of October 2013 be adjourned.
Carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much. Thank you very much.